Do we have any agenda review? No. Agenda review, anything to be added? Okay. So I'll take a motion on the minutes for June 8. Did everybody see the minutes?
No.
Okay, so we'll table the minutes right now at this point. So action items, signatures, there's payroll manifest, P-828 inventory form, land use change tax, timber tax levy, intent to excavate, quick claim deed, an updated policy regarding overage and shortage, appointment form, letter of hire, com star letters, exit interview letter, and leave request. Was there anything that the chair needed to sign that we need a motion for?
Yes, that would be the paving contract.
Okay, do we have a motion?
And reclaim.
And reclaim or one?
Yes.
Have the chair sign? Have the chair sign the contract? Okay, do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous. Any other? Karen, was that up? Okay, and new business was the monthly building inspector report, three wetland applications, the paving update, and the library project update. All right, so we do have a deliberation, so I'm going to open the hearing at 5:12. And this deliberation is in regards to Sergeant Sullivan. As you know, we had the hearing last week. Seems like it was a long time ago, but it was last week, two weeks ago? Oh, wow. And there's a lot of information. My concern personally, and each board member is going to be speaking about their feelings, was the fact that three specific questions that I asked in regards to emails that Sergeant Sullivan had written was not answered. It also was not answered under Garrity. And also the fact that one of the letters, to paraphrase, had to do with refusal to work with the chief, refusal to take part in mediation that the board directed, which was not a request. And the third one was refusal to answer the questions at the hearing that was requested by Sergeant Sullivan. Those in itself are grounds for termination. And those are my feelings on this subject. If someone could turn it down, because the echo is just really... It's distracting. And those are my specific reasons on my concerns in regards to the hearing. So I'm going to turn it over to Paula, if you have thoughts and concerns.
I believe it is our responsibility as a board, we were elected by the town to see to the needs of the town. And part of that is for us to make sure that our departments, all departments are staffed and operational to the best ability that we can and that the town can. Through information and through the hearing, Sergeant Sullivan has not did not want to return to work, did not want to participate in mediation. And at the hearing, did not want to answer any questions in regards to those issues at the public hearing, which was at his request, the public hearing. I think it's our responsibilities, the town, to move forward and take care of all our departments, which includes our police department. Yes.
Rick, did you have any thoughts in regards to the hearing last week, two weeks ago?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to say just started to get to know Mr. Sullivan and the chief at the same time, both of which I find are very decent people. I'm very disappointed in the way the hearing went. Disappointed in a lot of the information that was not provided. Disappointed in the inability to ask questions and get the information that I was looking for. Not just information I'm looking for, but information that I think that the citizens of Barnstead deserved. I think it was more of a attack on each person's individual personality. There's many things that I am aware of that Mr. Sullivan has done that doesn't fit or belong in normal working relations, should I say, in any department. Why those were done, I don't have answers for. And that's what's bothering me. I think it's important for the departments, all of our departments, to handle each one of these situations in a professional way. And I think with good communication and good leadership, I think this probably could have stayed internally to the department, and I think the department could have handled it themselves. Ed?
Chairman?
Go ahead, Ed.
I've sat on this board off and on for 21 years. This is not the first hearing that I've participated in prior to the termination of an employee. So I was curious and interested to see how this one was going to unfold. That being said, I will reiterate some of what Rick has said and some of what Paul has said. Every one of us here has been elected to sit in this position. And once we were elected or appointed, we were charged with upholding the laws of the state of New Hampshire, Town of Barnstead, and looking out for the best interests of this town. That being said, one of those responsibilities is to look out for the health and the safety of the citizens. In this case, it requires the staffing and the maintenance of a workforce. Part of that is making sure that we have an adequate or our staffing is adequate and that positions are filled once they become vacated. I take it as a personal affront when an employee determines that they are going to dictate to this board, or me, how things should be done or how they want them done. Sorry, but unless you were elected, don't even waste your time. Because I have my responsibilities and I intend to follow through on them to the best of my abilities, just as my oath of office dictated. So my opinions will be based on my obligation to uphold my oath of office.
Gary?
I'm reading with everyone here. I also want to state the fact that I have the utmost respect for what all of these gentlemen do. They need to do it together and as one. Hot enough out there as it is, they have to go through all of this. I think it's another bad stain on the Town of Barnstead that this is even happening. But the fact of the matter is, I also was elected to look out for the town, to look out for the taxpayers. And we're responsible for all of it. The buildings, the property, the employees, the department heads, and what's best for the taxpayers that elected us. We can't do that when a department can't run right. Whether it be because of this or that, some of that has already been determined. And maybe again down the road, I don't know. But up to this point, I was very disappointed that questions couldn't be answered. There's two sides to every story, and I wanted to hear the other side. I understand why they weren't, but I didn't get those answers. And without those answers, I heard from the side, and that's all I have to go on. I have the utmost respect for you, Sergeant Sullivan, and have known you to be a heck of a guy, but little we did get to know each other. But sitting up here and that responsibility that's been given to me, not getting the answers we need, not responding to our orders and whether they came through the town administrator or who they came from, not getting those responses and getting no's for other things and refusing to do other things that this board, nobody else, that this board set out there to be answered and done, it's disappointing, to say the least, but it's just not the way I wish things had gone.
So hearing the board's discussion, there's two avenues, I believe. Correct? That someone would need to make a motion, and we can discuss what the motion is after there's a second. But we would need a motion either to terminate or a motion to reinstate. So what is the will of the board? After having all the information presented to them?
I make a motion that we terminate the services of Sergeant Sullivan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? And to be clear, to add to the motion, the specific reasons were written notification that Sergeant Sullivan would not work with the chief, refusal to attend mediation. That was not even, it wasn't a request from the board, it was a mandate from the board. Refusal to answer questions from this board at the hearing, even when offered Garrity. Again, each one in itself is a terminable offense. So is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's 4-1. Thank you. Okay, for informational items, do we have anything miscellaneous items to bring forth? Nothing?
The B.C.E. meeting Thursday.
You gonna go to that, Ed?
Just regular clockwork.
And I think you're covering for Rick on the first.
I am.
You covering for me on the first? Well, I didn't hear none about this.
Aren't you going away, July 1st?
Nancy, I haven't got anything to say yet, but you have a conflict on one of the things that are on the planning board?
We're just trying to get because...
That's fine. You can have it.
No.
No, we...
No, there is.
We had a discussion with Nancy because that the time when Paula wasn't able to attend.
I know, bypassed the middleman, huh? All right.
And then she called me and asked me if I could, and I said I didn't know if that was...
I would never call you unless I already talked to her.
And you had, and Paula wasn't able to attend.
Nope, that's fine.
Will you be there, because Rick has to excuse himself? And I said, well, yes, I will.
I have to excuse myself, because it is a, I am a...
Oh, that was why, I forgot.
That's all.
I didn't...
But he comes in every meeting, so...
Well, no, there was the question, if neither of you were able to attend, how would a representative from the select board be able to go without being sworn in? That was the discussion with Nancy.
Oh, okay.
She would have to look into something like that, because we weren't really sure.
That's fine, that's no problem. Anytime I can get out of a meeting, count me in.
Okay. All right, so do we have any public announcements? Do you have a public announcement?
I believe that July 9, Lock Lake is going to do another food truck night with some of the antique chorus. So I believe everybody from Bornsted is invited to attend.
July 9?
July 9.
And where's that, down at the Colony?
Down at the main beach, where it was last time.
What are you going to do there?
A food truck night. So we have, thus far, we have, I believe, three food trucks. I know for sure we have the T.D.'s Smokehouse, and I believe we have the Younger Brett T.D.'s Taco Truck, I believe it is. And I don't know what the other one is. Oh, very nice.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. We, Karen, do you have the form for the swearing in? We do have a swearing in.
Yes, you need to sign.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Chief Poirier. Has he's ignoring me?
Don't forget your microphone.
I didn't. I know you normally like to have a few words to say before we swear someone in.
I'd like to thank the board for meeting up with us tonight for the pleasure of swearing in Officer Neil Casali. A little bit about Neil. Neil's been in law enforcement for, I would say, 34 years. He is a retired Nashville police officer. He retired from Nashville back in 2009. Since then, he's stayed in law enforcement on a part-time basis, working at different police departments in Nashville. He served as a bomb technician. He was also a member of the SWAT team, and he served as the department's school resource officer for 10 years. He's a motorcycle, he was a motorcycle cop down there, so he brings a lot to the table. And I've already had some discussions with the school board and with the superintendent and principal. And we're looking forward to having Neil in the Barnstead Elementary School on a part-time basis. We're looking at three days a week when school starts so that he can be our official school resource officer. On the fourth day of the week, he'll be working with us in patrol, augmenting shifts when we need him to fill in in certain spots. So again, Neil is also, he was also a assistant principal at Bishop Brady. So he's well-educated, he's got a master's degree, and he's going to be a great mentor to the new officers that we have coming on the department when they leave the academy in August after they graduate. So we're happy to have him, and I'd like to move forward with his promotion to part-time police officer.
Okay.
You got to say aye.
Neil Casali.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance?
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America?
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire?
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof?
And support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Aye, say your name?
Aye, Neil Casali.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear?
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully?
And affirm that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge?
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties?
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent on me?
Incumbent on me.
As part-time police officer?
As part-time police officer.
For the Town of Barnstead?
For the Town of Barnstead.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations?
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution?
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire?
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And we'll have, we'll have to have Neil sign it as well?
Thank you. Everybody?
Yes.
Welcome to Barnstead.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
You're welcome. Chief, before you run off, I just ask, do you have any update on the bricks, like when they're...
Yes. We actually spoke to the company today, and we're, they're due to be here July 6th, the bricks. And we're hoping, they even said maybe even before the 4th. So that's, that's the date we got today. And then as soon as they get here, we got to purchase some blank bricks as well, and then we'll install. And John Gannon is going to be doing, he's a local contractor, he's going to be installing them for us. He's also done some of the other landscaping for us. And all the trees and shrubberies have been ordered, so that should be in any day now as well. And the, Brian and Judy Gower have, will be helping us plant, do the planting. And we're hoping that Ben from the fire department will come over and help with the excavating, digging the holes and stuff like that. He's been a great, great help to us, so that's, that's... I have one other thing. If the board has time, it's just about the fencing. I know that we got two quotes, one from Superior Fence Company and the other one from Real Fence Company to do the fencing around the propane tank, the generator, and put up some bollards at the PD. I've called, literally called four different companies and got no response. Everybody's just too busy. I put a call into Superior. Superior wouldn't be able to get out here till late September. I called Real Fencing Company, they're from here in Barnstead, and Kevin Reel stopped by the PD this morning, which I thought was real nice of him, he just stopped by. And we looked over the job, and I'm recommending that we give the job to Kevin, Kevin Reel from Real Fencing. He said he could most likely start the job in July for us. He doesn't know that I'll help all the materials for everything, but he certainly has some of the materials to get at least the coverage around the electrical boxes, the antenna, and he's able to put the bollards in. And in the meantime, he's also going to be looking to get the other fencing. He's going to order it. What I like about his bid as opposed to the Superior bid, Superior's can put galvanized chain link fence. He's going to put galvanized, but it's also black vinyl coated, which is, which is better weatherproof, and it looks, it'll look nicer with the property over there. So I'm asking if it's okay, if the board would take a vote that we give this bid to Real Fencing.
What were the two bids?
So Superior Fencing was $10,694, and Real Fencing was $11,050. So about 400, it's about a $400 difference.
And was this budgeted?
I, I believe, yeah, I believe, yeah, it was, yeah. Yep, the building fund.
Yes, that...
Move we award the bid to Real Fencing to install fencing around the generator and the propane tanks at the police department.
I'll second it.
And then the total's $11,050?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous.
It's a good thing you weren't looking for somebody to do roofing.
Chief, one more question.
You wouldn't have gotten anybody to talk to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and wait till you look at your materials, too, that'll be interesting.
I know.
Have you been in contact or are working on speaking with the school board in reference to the resource officer?
I'm sorry, to what, I'm sorry?
To, to the resource officer plan that you, you know, got going on with Neil?
Yes.
Okay, so you've been in contact?
I've been in contact with the school board. I've been in contact with the superintendent.
Okay.
The principal. You're talking about the future, right?
Yes.
Yes, we've had, we've been in...
Really excited about that program.
Yep, yep.
Stay right on top of that.
I second that, I'm really looking forward to having a police presence up there. I think it's going to be a big help.
We are too. This has been something I wanted to do since I got here, and I think it's, we're going to make it happen, so...
Cool, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a 5/30 or super road agents. George, you are up.
We gonna swear him in, too? Or swear Adam?
Just want to let you know Narrows Road's all messed up again.
Which one?
Narrows.
What do you mean, I just did part of it today.
Okay, well, okay, see, it's good.
All right, well, grading as usual, we're going up. You know, we've got Lock Lake done and a bunch of other roads in town done. Calcium rolled, we're going after it. We got the tractor out mowing every day. He's on North Barnstead now. He should finish there probably tomorrow or the next day. And then he's coming back down to this side of town.
Now, who you got mowing?
Danny's in it.
Danny? Have you got another guy training on that, or...
I have nobody else to train on it.
No?
The other guys are with me. I got one guy on the roller, one guy in the calcium truck. So everybody's right out straight.
Need to get other guys involved now.
What's that?
The mowing. And the grading, everybody else.
I know.
One guy's not good, you know what happens.
Well...
And I have a question, George, what, speaking of being right out straight, I'm, I know we have this paving contract that we just agreed tonight and that the road crew is going to be involved in that. And I'm have some concerns about being tied up with that and other things, not being able to be taken care of just due to staffing and such. So do you have a plan for how we're going to deal with that?
I do. The biggest part will be the day we reclaim. I'll have everybody there that day. After that, it's basically two guys. Then the other guys can be off doing other things. Once I get it all graded, I can walk, I can walk away until we're ready to pave. And then the day we pave, my guys plus myself will be doing traffic control. Because if you rent traffic control... Because if you rent traffic control, you know, as well as I do, it's big money. So we can take a day, day and a half, or whatever it takes, and we go with them and we just do the traffic control. So I'm basically, I lose a full crew for two and a half days. So hopefully by then.
And we're going to have enough water? Because I know there's a question about the water.
That new truck of ours, I made a mistake when I said it was 1,500 gallons. It's 2,000 gallons. And it's coming out of that truck and it comes out fast and it puts a lot of water up. We did a test with it right at the shed and two passes at five miles an hour, all the way up and back, you're putting that water into the ground three inches each time. So you're going to have more than enough water.
Okay.
It's a good system we've got.
Okay. I have one last question. I know I talked to you about, I know we have issues with culverts all around town and I know that we have culverts that other people are responsible for and not taking care of. Are we making any progress with that?
We made progress on that one, on your road.
Yeah.
Last Friday, I met with the guy that takes care of all of that for them. And they're gonna, actually, they're paving that hill. They've agreed to finally do something to that hill. They're gonna, I told them, I said, you're going to have to do a lot of work. They've got some contractor, I believe it's Advance, I'm not 100% sure, that's going to do it for them, but they're going to pave it. They're going to put asphalt swales in and super elevate the hill so that it goes to the swales, so the water no longer will come into our road.
Great.
So I agreed to go in and flush that culvert out with my water truck and my system that I have on it. But they've got to do their part.
Yeah. We have others around town, George, that are the, you know what I mean? That are, other people are responsible for.
Well, we have, yeah, we have some that are the people responsible for every driveway culvert.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, ones that.
And association roads?
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Yeah. We do. And a lot of them take care of them.
You think it will help if they take care of them?
Oh, it's a big help.
Be a big help.
It is a big help. I agree.
But I know chasing them down is not always easy.
Yeah. It's just the chase that's fun. So the only other biggest thing we got is grader tires. I've got four on the back, two that are smooth, that I thought we might be able to get through the year with, but now they're starting to weather crack. And I got one every day now I have to put air in it. I priced out grader tires. I got three prices. So whatever you guys want to do with that, I mean, I, I recommend we get some.
Is the back?
Back. Fronts are good.
Doesn't matter who you get them from. Will they come to the garage and change them at the garage?
They will come right there and put them on. I have the whole price for everything.
Then you can, then you can schedule them for Friday.
Yep. So the grader's not shut down for a day. Yep. So like I said, I got three prices. I got from Northeast Tire, Stratum Tire and Sullivan. And Sullivan is actually the cheapest for the tire that I'm looking for. And total price with Sullivan will be $3,056 for four tires put on a grader.
And they put them on?
And they'll put them on. They'll come right here and put them on.
What are the other bids?
The other bids are, Northeast Tire was, hang on a second. Uh, $3,860 for four put on. Stratum Tire was $3,900 for four tires mounted. So, and Sullivan Tire has those right in stock, I do believe. So.
Give Karen copies of all that?
I will give Karen all of these.
Ed?
I move that we authorize the road agent to enter into a contract with Sullivan Tire to come to the town shed and replace four tires on the rear of the grader for the price of.
$3,000.
$3,056.
$3,056, right? Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Okay. The time. Thanks, Gary.
See you next week.
No, you won't.
No, you won't.
What's your supply, what's your supply of culverts looking like?
I got a full supply. We just got a load delivered. So we've got plenty of pipe.
If there's anything else that you might need. Yeah.
Speak to you? You're going to give me a load?
Looking now because.
Oh, yeah, things are coming.
Everything's taken 10 times longer than home, so.
It's awful.
Don't, don't even think you're gonna, you know.
It's getting bad.
You're going to need it within the next month or two. You better, you better come up with some.
Well, I ordered my culverts a month ago and it came in like a week ago. Usually, it used to be I could call today and get them tomorrow.
Yeah.
So.
When you guys start culverts?
I'm hoping soon.
Use it for the roads, right?
Yes. I'm hoping soon. I got a, my pot timer that we've had, he'll be going in next week for a CDL. Hopefully he gets that. Once he gets that, then he can come on.
Nathan?
No.
Yeah, but what about Nathan?
I'm waiting on him. He's all done at the end of the month as far as the COVID thing. And then the army will, they got to do their cleanup. And he thinks he's probably going to get his papers to come back to work, be discharged from there sometime in July. He's hoping mid-July.
Who knew?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Well done on our service stuff.
George, one more question. Are you still the only person up there who's culvert certified?
I am. In fact, I got a notice today that there's going to be culvert maintainer classes coming up and certification classes coming up, I believe in August. So I got two guys that I'm going to take and send them in. I've got to go back for a re-cert myself. So there'll be three of us certified. So.
It looks like from the list here, we took Parade Hill off of this?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention while George was here that we, I spoke with Jason Levitt and we were talking about Parade Hill and he suggested that not even to reclaim it because to reclaim it and leave it as dirt with the drainage issues, it would just be a nightmare. So George and I discussed that. I've talked with R&amp;D Paving. So that's taken off the table. I gave everybody a printout, a new spreadsheet. So the price is still well within reason. They are going to go ahead and put a base on North Barnstead Road. So you'll still get, the majority of the projects you wanted done will be done.
So this is all good here?
That's all good. R&amp;D has a, they're happy.
Yep.
I was worried about Parade Hill.
Yeah.
Yep. I would rather leave it for another year until we can do the whole thing and be done with it. Because if we get, if we ever got a hard rain, we'd be in trouble.
Yeah.
So.
All right. What was their, they had their idea of start date? I remember they said it.
They're talking, what, mid-July?
Yeah, I asked, I sent an email this morning and so they're hoping mid to late July. The paving may actually end up in August, but.
Right, which is fine. It's hot in August.
And then we'll get new AC prices next week. So we'll find out.
All we can ask for.
What the increases. I have enough in the budget to cover the shoulder gravel, the AC price increase even into August, so.
We should be, we should be in good shape.
Great.
So. The time clock at the shed has been broke. I got it. We fixed it today.
Have you, does Lisa know?
I just told Lisa.
Okay, good. Because we were going to order another one and we're.
Well, I figured I'd let you know before you did.
Yes, perfect. We're looking into some updated equipment, time cards, a bunch of different things. We'll probably have to wait until next year, but just to sort of come up into the right century.
Scanners, so we know where you guys are all the time. Tracking devices.
That's, that is perfect. That way you can bring me lunch.
We actually got digital time clocks, but they work fantastic. And you don't have to worry about setting the time back or forward for a daylight scan.
There you go.
Yeah, if you guys want to keep track of me, that's fine. You can bring my lunch to me.
We know where you are. Where you're.
Yeah, and then you can have the time clock punches for lunch.
Always. Find you hiding out behind the country store all the time.
So, but I guess that's all I have.
All right.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good deal, thank you.
All right. I guess I'll go home now.
Thanks, George.
Thank you very much.
Always a pleasure.
All right. So we pretty much have the department heads committee report. So we're going to open up to public input. If anyone has any public input.
Do we do a motion and do something on the paving contract?
No, we already made the motion. We did the motion for me to sign the paving contract.
I'll be right.
If you can state your name.
Margaret Cipriano.
How do you spell her?
C-I-P-R-I-A-N-O. I have actually two concerns. As president of Lock Lake, I've been getting a lot of complaints about fireworks going off at midnight since the summer season is here with all the short-term rentals. And I know that you guys are working on the noise ordinance. I just wanted to let you know that most of the people that have complained, I've gotten about 15 complaints in the last week during the week.
Next week.
Yeah. Next week is a holiday.
Fireworks.
Fireworks at midnight.
Why are you getting them?
I'm the association president.
Ah, okay.
So I have told them that we don't have any rules in place. It's not in our bylaws, it's not in our deed. And that there is a town ordinance and that the BOS is working on amending the ordinance. I just wanted you to know that most people don't have any problem with the weekends, Fridays and Saturdays. But as Fab had said, you know, he used to get annoyed when he had to get up at 4:00 in the morning when people were setting fireworks off at midnight. That's the kind of complaint I'm getting. It's in the middle of the week, it's midnight. Why are they setting off fireworks? And it's basically summer rentals.
They're on vacation.
They're on vacation. They're coming up to have a good time.
They don't want to put it on the community page.
Margaret, I want to tell you though, I believe that has to go before a town meeting.
Yes, I, I did say that, that it'll have to be voted on through town meeting, but that you were working on.
Until March.
Right. But I did say that the Board of Selectmen is working on it.
Yeah.
So you might hear something from some of them. I just wanted you to be aware of that, that I told them there's really nothing that we can do as a board in Lock Lake, but that the Board of Selectmen of the town is working on it.
So just a question, you don't have the ability to like amend or your, or, you know what I mean? The rules you have, you don't have.
We have.
Association, okay, you have to, noise.
We have a.
A tenor.
Well, we have a deeded restrictions and easements that we have to abide by.
Yeah.
Most of the properties are private properties. So for us to set rules and stuff, it's usually for common properties. So it becomes a real sticky situation. So that's why.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's why we go by the town ordinance. The other concern that I have is the milfoil treatment. So last year, Ed Neester came before the board and stated that in the areas that Lock Lake was treated, there is no milfoil. That is very true. But last year in July, when they were treating Lock Lake, my cove was not treated because Ed Neester had come out in the beginning of June with Solitude, the company who does the treatment, and they didn't see milfoil. So I had showed them by my dock, there's a little bit of milfoil and they, they didn't think it really was milfoil. It was very small growth. And I said to them, the weather was cold, longer. And so as a biologist, I know those blooms are not going to happen until the weather is long, warm enough. Lo and behold, in August, people at the end of my cove found some milfoil last year. Not a lot, but they did find it. They noted it. In the meantime, Solitude did not treat the area down the cove where I live, which is where half moon, all the water comes into Lock Lake, that cove. And they decided that they didn't need to spend the money on that and treat that because they didn't really see anything there. My argument was that the water wasn't warm enough. This year, we had our diver go and he goes to look for milfoil and cuts the milfoil. And on the first day in doing the milfoil cutting on our boat, he found, I don't know if you can see this, 10 bags of milfoil just in the area across from my property on the other side. He has not been able to come all the way around and do my side. And I see a lot of milfoil by my dock and where my beach is now. So the milfoil is getting worse in that area and my concern is that it is going to spread. This year, we have no reimbursement from the town because it was decided that Lock Lake wasn't going to be treated because Ed Neester thought that it was all done. Because the areas that he treated, it was gone and he figured it would dissipate throughout the whole lake. So Lock Lake is in the situation where we have to treat. We are in negotiations with Solitude. Solitude has told us that it's going to be hard for us to get a permit at this point because they're booked up until the end of August. So we're trying to work with them to see if we can get it done a little earlier, but we will have to get it done this year. And we know that we won't be reimbursed this year. I am hoping that you consider Lock Lake next year in terms of the reimbursement. I believe it was like $6,000 that Lock Lake received. I believe we paid out $18,000. So it is a big help. It's a third of the cost. And I actually sent, I actually spoke to Ed Neester last year when all of this had happened. He disagreed with my opinion that the milfoil didn't bloom yet. And then in August, when people were complaining, I, I made a note and our Lake Health Committee let him know that there was some milfoil. He went out, he said he didn't see any. This year, I know the Lake Health Committee, I believe they contacted him again. And it's a mess. It's a real mess. And our cove comes into one of the big areas of the lake. It's an area where the loons nest. It's, it's a very shallow area, which is where milfoil likes to grow. It's also an area that we keep getting water from half moon. And if there's any remnants coming in from half moon, they're such a deep lake, they're not going to see the milfoil that we do. Because their lake is so deep, it really will come and travel and set itself up in areas where it is very shallow. And that's exactly what's happening. So it is a big concern for us because we have mitigated the milfoil in certain areas of the lake and it's great. But because last year they didn't continue the process, they stopped it. And they used, I believe they actually used the chemical that they had permitted for, for other areas like Sun Cook River and for the Sun Cook Lakes instead of Lock Lake. So that's our concern, that next year, please consider us again for milfoil treatment. It's not gone away like we thought it did. It did go away in certain areas, but it is rampant in other areas.
Has he come out to look at it?
I don't believe he has come out yet. I don't believe he has come out yet, I know that the chairperson of our Lake Health Committee has been in contact with Solitude and trying to negotiate getting something done, because we don't want it to spread. You know, we were winning the battle and we don't want to lose it.
Margaret, did they give you any kind of a bid or an estimate as to what it would cost to treat Lock Lake this year?
I'm not sure because the area will be less, so last year, I believe it was $18,000, but then they took some of it off because of the fact that they didn't see the milfoil. So we did get a discount last year and I could find that out. But my concern is that I know when I did speak to Ed Neester, he was very concerned about the Sun Cook River and he wanted to put most of his efforts there. Meanwhile, we now have an issue, so.
If I could add that Margaret did send an email that I received this afternoon about the milfoil. However, the agenda was complete, it was done. I did forward it to Ed Neester, so he's aware and he would like to come to the next meeting. And he said, just let me know when I could schedule it, so he could come and speak to the board about it.
And if I know the next meeting, I can have my Lake Health Committee here, because they're the ones who found that it's a lot of milfoil.
Sure, and also, you know, if you remember at town meeting, he asked for more money and town meeting voted it down. So it's not necessarily just the milfoil committee fault. They have applied for a grant, as he stated, there is a new type of chemical or product that they're.
And that worked well.
Will work well.
The Procellicor that they used worked really well in the areas where they used it.
Right.
It's just, it just happens to be a couple of coves that were not treated that now have very large blooms, I mean, 10 bags in one morning, it's a four-hour process that they usually do. And it took three people to get all the bags up onto the boat and it was, they were loaded. And it was just one little section of the cove.
Go over or heard of or any discussion on how to prevent it from coming from Half Moon in?
Well, the fact that I don't think Half Moon has.
Is it or could it be generated from the boat launch?
Well, with our boat launch and our key fob access, we noticed a lot of bladder wart, milfoil, all have gone down because we are not getting outside boats, we're getting our own people bringing in their boats that usually leave them in the lake all season. So they're in dry dock all year, they've been cleaned down and now they're coming in. If anybody has a boat that brings it in, yeah, that's going to be an issue, Winnipesaukee has that issue all the time and they actually have somebody who checks them on weekends, I don't think they do it all week. Half Moon may have people bringing it in, but like I said, because their lake is so deep, they don't really see an issue with it, or at least I don't think they do. We met with Half Moon at our last working meeting and they didn't seem to have a concern about milfoil. They had asked us how we were doing. But all it takes is a tiny little piece on a boat. And once it is released, it just, and when it blooms, it settles to the bottom, sets its roots and it blooms and it spreads like crazy because it's like all these tiny little seeds going off.
Do you know if they're finding it elsewhere in Lock Lake besides that cove?
I believe it was two areas that were not treated last year. I'm not positive on that, I'd have to ask the Lake Health Committee, but I know for sure the cove where I am was not treated because they didn't originally see the milfoil. They went out on a boat and they looked for it. Because I had concerns that I saw some milfoil and they could not find it. So my, at the end of my dock, it's about six or seven feet deep and you can pretty much see clear to the bottom and that's where.
Well, that spot right there is kind of bad anyways, if the water table or the water level's down, there's not a lot that comes in from Half Moon. So that section right in there just becomes stagnant, so to speak.
Well, it becomes very warm.
And warm, correct.
The warm temperatures are what allow these things to bloom, including the cyanobacteria, which we haven't had a huge problem with it in Lock Lake. I know that Half Moon has had a lot more problems with cyanobacteria. But last year, we did see some cyanobacteria creeping up in different areas and we had to shut down beaches, so.
And just one final comment, in the past, Lock Lake Colony has always just sent a letter to the board during budget season asking to consider the $6,000.
And I think they did last year, but then it was voted that, or Ed Neester had suggested, he may have talked to the Lake Health Committee and they decided not to do it because they thought it was gone.
Yeah.
But my concern is for the future.
Right, so please, just have the Lock Lake Colony Board send a letter around budget season so we can include it.
Yep, I will do that.
We got to have him come in?
He's, I'm going to schedule him at their next meeting, which will be July 6. So certainly if you would like to have the committee come in and I'll set aside.
I will, yeah, I will either have some of the committee from the Lake Health.
Okay.
Or I will have some of the.
Something else too.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further public input, anybody online?
Maybe.
No. They thinking or no? No hands raised?
No hands raised.
Seeing no hands raised. We're going to close public input. Do we have a non-public?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And that would be under C.
So I'll take a motion under RSA 91-8 colon 3 Roman numeral 2C, which is personnel? I'm always personnel?
Yes.
Okay, personnel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ed?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gary, Diane, yes?
Yes.
We're in on public, thank you all very much.
Thank you.